Good evening, everyone. It is confirmed at this time that we do have a forum present. So with that being said, I'm going to call the Millville Annual Town Meeting of May 8, 2023 to order at 7:00 p.m. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor civil servants, military, and frontline personnel who are dedicating their lives protecting our freedoms, safety, and democracy, both at home and abroad. You may be seated. So good evening, everyone. I'm happy to see everyone here tonight assembled together for our annual town meeting. At this time, I would like to take a minute and introduce everybody on the stage, starting with our Board of Selectmen. You do. Jennifer Gill, Chair.
Richard Remus.
Andrew Allward.
Roland Barrett.
Matthew Mealy.
And then on our Finance Committee, we have...
Gary Gill.
Claudette Barrett.
Turn it on.
Turn it on. Okay, folks, just give us a second. We're just starting here. There we go.
Gary Gill.
Thank you.
Claudette Barrett.
Ciara Gallagher.
And then I'd also like to introduce our Town Clerk, Diane Lockwood. We have Peter Caruso, our Town Administrator, and Brian Riley, our Town Attorney. Here we go. If you have not already done so, please take a moment and silence your cell phone at this time. As a reminder, if there are any visitors that checked in with an observer badge that are not registered voters in the town, please sit in the front rows over here as designated. Everybody else who has checked in should have received an orange voting card with a number on it. We'll be using that to vote tonight. So if you haven't checked in, please be sure to see the tellers at the back station at this time. On the back table also, there are some documents. There's a copy of the warrant, there's a copy of the budget, and a packet from the school committee. These are documents that we'll be referring to this evening, so if you don't have them, please raise your hand. One of the tellers can bring them down to you. And I'd also like, just as a quick housekeeping note for anybody looking through the warrant tonight, if you're not familiar with it already, there is a typo, a small typo in the warrant. There is no Article Number 17, so it's not a misprint in your book. When we get to it, we're just going to go from 16 to 18. It is what it is. So don't think that what you have in your hand is incorrect. We're aware of it, and it's been noted several times, so we will just pretend 17 doesn't exist. I'd like to take a minute to review a few procedural rules that we will be following this evening to make sure we have a productive meeting. As is the case with every town meeting, all attendees here tonight are expected to be respectful of everyone in attendance and of the meeting itself. You don't have to agree with everyone here, but you must remain respectful. As the moderator, I have the responsibility to ensure that this meeting maintains its standard, and I will ask anybody who is not conducting him or herself in a manner to leave. Going forward, I'll read an article, and a motion will be made and seconded. There'll be a three-minute limit for the person who moves the article to make a discussion or presentation about it, other than the budget article, in which Finance Committee will be given some additional time to review and discuss the article. Any resident wishing to speak for or against an article may raise their hand, be recognized, come down to one of the microphones that's located right in the front. You'll be asked to state your name and your address clearly for the Town Clerk's record, and then you'll be given up to three minutes to talk. At the conclusion of three minutes, I will thank you for your comment. You'll need to stop speaking and take your seat. After every resident who wishes to speak has a turn, if there are residents who wish to speak again, I will recognize you. All questions and discussions should be directed towards the moderator and not others in the audience. If appropriate, I will then ask someone on the stage to respond. Please do not address a previous speaker, town official, or other resident directly. Discussion and questions must be relevant to the motion that we are voting on. It's my job to ensure this. I will limit or stop discussion if a comment is not within the scope of the article being voted on at that time. Throughout the meeting, there may be instances where I will allow non-residents to speak if they can contribute relevant information or offer expertise to any article that we are voting on, provided that there are no objections from the meeting. This could include, but is not limited to, our Town Administrator, Town Council, representatives from the school committees, or department heads. So without any further ado, we can commence the business of this meeting. The way it will work is I'll propose a mo... Someone on the stage will... Nope, sorry. The way this will work is, I will propose a motion, somebody on the stage will move it. So the wording that I'm going to say might be a little bit different than what's in your warrant, but I'm sure you'll be able to follow along. The amounts will be added in, the funding sources will be added in. If there are any questions throughout the meeting, please raise your hand. You can come to the microphone, and we'll all get through this together. Crash. It's okay. Okay, so Article 1, Monetary Increases. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary article or line items, as recommended by the Finance Committee, presented at this town meeting, shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding sources that will be reduced by the same amount. I'd be looking for a motion.
I moved at the town vote that any motion or amendment...
You can just...
Just say so moved?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, sure. So moved.
Okay, motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
I second.
Second made by Claudette. Is there any discussion? Gary, would you like to speak to the article?
Sure. This is an article that we have at every town meeting where we discuss budgetary items. It basically just says that if you propose a change to the budget to increase or decrease that line item, you have to state where those funds are coming from or going to.
Thank you.
So it's a housekeeping item.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I do declare it unanimous. So we'd be looking for Article 2. This is bills of a prior fiscal year, and at this time, there are no bills. So we would be looking to take no action on this article. Is there a motion?
Motion.
There's a motion made by Ciara Gallagher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, so I'll take this one. There are no bills to be paid. Are there any questions or discussion about this article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising their cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The vote passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 3, we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer $45,513.84 from free cash to fund the deficit incurred with the snow and ice budget per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion made by Claudette Barrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Gary. Claudette or Gary, do either of you want to speak to this article?
Yeah, sure. So this article is typically in the annual town meeting as well. This is the only line item in the budget where the town is allowed to go over without appropriations, and it's intended to give towns flexibility, just because, obviously, the weather is so unpredictable. So we often go over. We allocate $80,000 in the budget. It's quite common for us to go over. This year, we were fortunate in that we didn't have as much weather, but we still did go over.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions regarding the article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 4, Highway Department, Chapter 90. So we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to accept and expend such sum or sums of money allotted to or to be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for the fiscal year 2024, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division for such purposes, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of 100% reimbursement of said amounts pursuant to Mass General Law 44 or any other enabling authority. Is there a motion?
I move the motion. I move the article.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Claudette. Gary, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, so this is an annual article, and it basically just enables the Highway Department to use the Chapter 90 funds which are provided by the state.
Is there any questions regarding this article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 5 for cable licensing fees. We'd be looking for an article... A motion that the town vote to transfer from the PEG Access and Cable Related Funds Account the sum of $7,500 to be forwarded to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school district. Is there a motion?
I motion to move the article.
Motion made by Roland Barrett. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Richard Remus. Roland, do you want to speak to the article?
Well, for the 20 years, maybe even better, Millville's always taken their cable fees...
Roland, is that one turned on?
Nope. There it was. Yeah, so very... Every year, we give a portion of the cable access reimbursement of the revenue that they make. We get a percentage of it, and we give the $7,500 to the Library and Media Department, as the article says. So it's pretty annual.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussions in regards to the article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 6, the creation and funding of a highway and bridge stabilization fund. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to create a highway and bridge stabilization fund and to transfer from free cash an amount of $80,000 as initial funding. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Jennifer Gill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andrew Allward. Before I hand it over to Jen, I just do want to make a note, because this is the creation of a stabilization. This will require two-thirds of the room to approve it for the motion to pass. Jen, do you want to explain it, please?
Yeah, sure. So if anyone filled out a survey for us about a year and a half ago, and thank you for filling that out, the top thing that people asked for out of anything else was road repairs. And road repairs take money, so we wanted to start setting aside some money in this account specific for road repairs and bridge repairs, so that when something came up, we had the funds to fix it instead of delaying, 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 waiting for Chapter 90 to catch up, things like that. This would able... This fund would able us to more immediately meet the needs of roads and bridges.
Thank you.
And thank you for filling out the surveys.
It's not inside the scope of the article, Jen. Okay. Is there any discussion or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the creation and funding of the highway and bridge stabilization fund in the amount of $80,000, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Okay, so the motion passes with two-thirds, but it is not unanimous. For Article 7, this is the capital stabilization fund, where we put money for capital needs. And I'm, at this time, informed that there will be no money moving over in there tonight, so we'd be looking for a motion to take no action on the article.
So moved.
Motion made by Jen Gill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. Jen, do you want to speak to it?
So for the last year, we've been very fortunate to have ARPA funds available to us, so we've been using that to do things like fix the furnace at the library and make investments in the senior centers. So we haven't had to touch this fund, and we typically keep it at about $200,000. It's at $206,000 and some change, so we don't need to put any money in there.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions from the floor? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 8 for the general stabilization account, stabilization fund. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash an amount of $135,000 to be placed in the general stabilization fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Claudette. Gary, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, sure. So the general stabilization account is basically our primary savings account. The amount this year essentially represents free cash that we received back from the state this year, minus the $80,000 we just put into the highway stabilization account, minus the snow and ice, and a few other incidentals, and leaving a little bit in free cash for future needs. So that results in this number of $135,000.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of moving $135,000 from free cash to the general stabilization fund, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. Your no? Okay, the motion passes, but it is not unanimous. Article 9, fund other post-employment benefits. At this time, I'm informed that there will not be any funding moving into post-employment benefits, so I'd be looking for a motion to take no action on this article.
So moved.
Motion made by Richard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Matthew. Richard, do you want to speak to the article?
So these are the funds that would be used towards post-employment benefits for retirees, and at this time, we'll be sending no funds over to this. We're funded at the appropriate rate.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes. It is not unanimous. Article 10 for the fiscal year 2024 budget. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $7,309,807 as deemed necessary to defray town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest and compensation for town officers, and to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, with such appropriation to be funded as follows. Raise and appropriate the sum of $7,105,418 to transfer the sum of $48,690 from the Septic Title V account, $19,042 from ARPA funds, and $136,657 from free cash, for a total of $7,309,807, as set forth in the budget document presented to town meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Helgi. So at this point, what we're going to do is I'm going to give it over to Gary, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, who will speak to it. When Gary is done speaking, we will go through the budget document that everybody should have a copy of. We'll go through department by department. I will read the department and the amount. If anybody wants to hold a specific department or amount, please yell "hold" and raise your hand. I'll acknowledge you. We'll hold it. When we get done reading it through, anything that is not held, we'll vote on and approve, and then we'll go back to anything that is held. So that's what you can expect. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, so as the moderator just mentioned, the total amount... The total proposed amount for the budget this year is $7,309,807. Unfortunately, this year is a step back from last year, where we had a balanced budget for the first time in many years. We have a deficit of approximately $136,000 this year. I think there's a couple considerations to keep in mind. First of all, and I know everyone in this room is aware of this, but it's been a very challenging year on the cost side of anyone's budget. So the inflation for the U.S. last year was about 8% nationally. Previous year was around 4.5%. We're tracking the 5% or 6% so far this year. And last year's inflation is the highest level of inflation we've had nationally since the 1980s. So unfortunately, when your primary source of revenue for the town budgets is our property taxes, those property taxes increased are limited by state law at 2.5%. You can see where the problem sort of exists. We've made a lot of progress in the budget over recent years, living within our means, holding back on increasing budget line items to try and level set the town for sustainable growth going forward. But in this... The context of this, with energy prices, with other costs going up, it's just very difficult. And what you've seen, as you look at the individual line items, for example, is our largest line item would be for the school district. It's about an 8% increase to the town of Millville, for something that represents about half of our budget. So right then and there, it's just... It's basically impossible to have a balanced budget. At the same time, we have recommended 3% pay increases for town employees, so the town employees are feeling this crunch as well, and we felt that it was prudent to offer, to the extent that we could, a cost of living increase for town employees, even though we're operating in a deficit. And we've also continued to invest in certain town departments. So there's an increase of about 7.5% to the senior center, about 6% to the library, and you'll see a fairly sizable increase to the fire department as well. And I think, context of the fire department, if you look back over the last decade, the funding for that department fluctuates based on capital expenditures, but the funding for that budget has been relatively flat. So we've invested in the police department, and this year, and really, in terms of the spending last year, we're also increasing, not to the extent that was requested, unfortunately, but we are investing in the fire department with this budget. So I think that gives you a little bit of context for the high level, the challenges that we're dealing with. But that being said, thanks to a strong free cash influx this year, thanks to the department heads being very restrained in terms of their spending, the town of Millville is still in very good financial standing. We have strong reserves, and we continue to be very selective in terms of how we spend them.
Thank you. Just about three minutes, too. Okay, so as I said, we'll go through each department and the amount. If anybody would like to hold, please yell out "hold" and raise your hand. Make sure I acknowledge it, and then when we get through, we'll vote on everything not held. Town moderator, zero. Board of Selectmen, zero. Nope, sorry, 579. Wrong column here. Town Administrator, $82,399. Finance Committee, $135. Yep, sorry, I'm looking in the wrong column here. $150, thank you. Finance Committee Reserve Fund, $29,400. Town Accountant, $52,746. Town Audit, $24,000. Board of Assessors, $62,315. Treasurer Collector, $109,100. Legal, $40,000. Technology, $31,850. Town Clerk, $61,308. Conservation Committee, $891. Planning Board and Zoning, $27,474. Town Hall, Old and New Buildings, $163,222. Annual Report, $500. Police Department, $675,665. Fire Department, $324,497. Building and Zoning Enforcement, $51,050. So there's going to be a hold on building and zoning, and I'm sorry, who's holding it? Aubrey. Civil Defense, $850. Animal Control, $12,000. Tree Warden, $13,500. Public Safety Communications, $74,011. MES Grounds Maintenance, $48,000. Blackstone Valley Tech, $313,767. Norfolk Agricultural Technical School, $219,515. Tri-County Vocational School, $57,616. Blackstone Millville Regional School Department, $3,562,737. Highway Department, $182,827. That's a hold on highway? Is that... That's Aubrey again. Snow, highway snow and ice removal, $80,000. Townwide Fuel, $36,000. Highway Street Sweeping, $21,000. Stormwater Management, $35,500. Public Street Lighting, $22,000. Board of Health, $33,962. Council on Aging, $53,870. Hold on Council on Aging? Who's holding it?
Pam.
Pam. Thank you. Veteran Services, $10,500. Library, $49,118. Recreation, $5,500. Memorial Park, $1,000. Historical Commission, $675. Memorial Day Celebration, $500. Debt Service, $234,560. Regional Retirement, $210,253. Unemployment Insurance, $3,000. Health Insurance Fringe Benefits on behalf of Employees, $140,000. Dental Insurance Plan, $5,400. Medicare Fringe Benefits on behalf of Employees, $20,000. Other Insurance, $125,000. So that would be the grand total of $7,309,807. At this time, I'm going to call for a vote on all of the article... On all of the lines that were not held. The only lines that were held were 210, Building and Zoning Enforcement, 279, Highway Department, and 332, Council on Aging. All those in favor of recommending the budget as motioned without the hold items, please signify by raising your orange cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. Okay, the motion passes. At this time, I'd like to invite Aubrey Bono to come up and speak to... It'll be line 210, the Building and Zoning Enforcement. There was an amount of $51,050. Now, Aubrey, as a reminder, you'll be given three minutes to ask your questions, clarify, whatever you need to do. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Aubrey Bono, 13, Paulette Way. My question on this is why the department request column for building and zoning is basically completely blank, but Board of Selectmen and FinCom recommended $51,050.
Thank you. Finance Committee, it's your budget. Would you like to take a look at that?
So the question is that the department request doesn't align with... So if you... So the question is that the department request doesn't align with, so if you look at the salary and the stipends, the request, I think this information was put in literally just what came in specifically from the department. The recommendation here has a split, reflects costs and expected costs, and I believe that this would be the town administrator's best estimate for what this is likely to cost in town. Again, there's some variability based on demand here, and I would defer to Peter if he wants to add some more color.
Town administrator, go ahead. I don't think, that's, that one's not on.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
That's correct. So the column that's under BOSS FinCom, those are the numbers I put in. You know, our new building inspector is not what you call budget-friendly, so I filled in the blanks. So I reflected what was submitted, and then filled in the blanks.
Does that answer the question? So I think just to make sure we're all acquainted with the spreadsheet, so the FY23 budget is in here, then the next column is what the department had requested. So you'll see that they had requested from, for the specific line 199, they had requested an increase in the salary line, and then the Board of Selectmen Finance Committee recommendation is probably just the 3% increase over last year. Yep, come on up.
So specifically on line 200, gas, plumbing, electrical inspection stipend, which increased 20%, that is not something the department had requested, it's just something that was, like, how did we derive that number?
I see what you're saying. So they didn't put in the request for it, but we have it in the 2023 budget. So I think what was being explained was that Peter assisted with helping with the budget. So, I mean, we know that we're going to have inspections and that we'd have to pay for them. Sorry, I probably shouldn't be answering the question, Peter.
That's correct. And also, the way it's been tracking this year, it's tracking at 12,000, so we thought that was the more correct number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from anybody else? Okay, so seeing none, we're going to call for the vote on this particular budget, so there are no changes to the dollar amount. We'd be looking for a motion to fund and appropriate line, the department Building and Zoning Enforcement, in the amount of $51,050. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Helgi. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise their cards. The motion passes. Okay, and then the next department that was held was Highway Department, so Aubrey, if you want to come back on down. I can anticipate your question. Go ahead.
Yeah, same question. I mean, so for Highway, and understanding that I didn't hold highway street sweeping or stormwater, but does that indicate that the department head just didn't submit a budget at all, which is why it's zero?
So I'm going to pass that off to Peter again.
That's correct.
That is correct. So Highway is an elected position, and elected officials should be encouraged by the people that they report to in an election, to make sure that they're performing their duties as assigned.
Okay, is there anyone from Highway who can speak to this increase here tonight?
Well, so if Highway didn't submit a budget, I guess, I would say if there's an increase to the budget, I would pawn it off on either the Finance Committee or Town Administrator, whoever submitted and worked up that budget for them.
Yeah, I mean, I think the reality is, there's two aspects of the Highway budget increase. One is fuel costs. There's some extra money allocated for minor road repairs. And the other big thing that's happened is that Highway's taken over grounds maintenance for a number of the properties. And so if you look at the individual line items for the park, for the school, you'll see that the maintenance number has gone to zero, and those numbers have been reflected in this budget.
Thank you, Gary. Does anybody, before I let you go, does anybody else wish to speak to the article? Okay, if you have a follow-up, Aubrey, I'll entertain it.
Thank you. So the Highway other regular salaries going from $65,000 to $79,158, that is not something that the department requested?
Again, the department didn't submit a request, but that increase reflects the 3% guidance that had been provided previously, as well as the salary associated with the groundskeeping.
Thank you. So it would be additional hours to take on the groundskeeping, and a 3% that's being afforded to all of the town employees.
Jackie, can I, can I make a motion in light of the fact that the Highway Department did not submit a budget at all, that we approve a $163,148 2024 Highway Department?
You sure can. So there's been a motion made on the floor to level fund the Highway Department at the same dollar amount as their 2023 budget, in the amount of $163,148, made by Aubrey Bono. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Andrew Alward. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this article? I'm going to let Jen do it. I saw her hand over here. Paul, you can come on up when Jen's done.
So I guess the only comment I would make, although I don't disagree with the spirit behind the motion, is if we do level fund this, we will be suffering in town services in terms of maintaining the parks, I believe the senior center, grounds is what they have taken on, as well as the library and other things. So those activities will not happen if this is level funded. So there will be a noticeable impact to services in the town.
Thank you.
And if everyone's comfortable with that, then, go ahead, Paul.
Yes.
Can you just say your name and?
Paul Let, 382 Chestnut Hill Road. I did notice in the budget that there was a $4,250 reduction in the Veterans Memorial Park. Was that part of what was reflected in this increase in the Highway Department, that exact $4,250?
So I'm going to let Gary speak to that, yes.
Okay. All right, so at the very least, even if you're level funding it, you're not really level funding it, it would be $63,148 plus $4,250, at the very least.
Thank you.
That's correct. If you wanted to look at it that way, but for this line item, and it's not just the Veterans Park, it's also, or the Veterans, it's others as well.
Would anybody else like to speak? Go ahead. Come on down.
Erin Bonaco, Albert Drive. I would just like to point out, though the spirit of the motion, if anyone participated in town elections, there was no one running for that position, therefore probably no budget to be submitted by said person. However, reducing that line tonight is going to affect the employees that are doing the job, that are hired by our town, that are out every day doing the work, taking care of our roads, taking care of our parks, and the additional responsibilities that are rolling over to that department. So I very much disagree with the reduction.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Natalia Alward, 49 Hill Street. I would just say, I didn't do my budget or didn't whatever, I'd be fired, but the thing is, if they're not doing that, if these departments aren't putting in a budget, what else are they not doing?
Okay, that's not in the spirit of the article. Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the budget? Okay, so at this point, we're going to vote on the amendment that's made to level fund the Highway Department in the amount of $163,148. All those in favor, please signify and hold your card up for a second, so I can get a really good look at this. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Okay, so the motion does not pass. At this time, I'm going to go back to the original budget that was proposed by the Finance Committee, so I'd be looking for a motion to recommend the Highway Department budget in the amount of $182,827.
So moved.
Motion made by Gary Gill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Helgi. All those in favor, please signify by raising their cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes. Okay, and Pam, if you'd like to come down. The next line that we held was line 332, the Council on Aging budget. Pam, if you can just state your name and address.
Pam Kobedish, 43 Central Street, Millville, Mass.
Thank you.
The reason why I got up to speak was regarding, well, first of all, I heard $7 million for budgeting and 3% increases, and I know those are little amounts, and I know our people here work really hard, and I'm not against that at all. I mean, I'm for raises.
Okay, we're speaking to Council on Aging, though.
But I'm talking about the Council on Aging, that's what I'm getting to. Now, we have been very fortunate on what we have received, no doubt about it, and that's why we are successful today. However, we do have a tiny problem. We have VN drivers. We asked for an increase in the VN drivers' budget in order to pay them. We were awarded some of the money, but not all that we asked for. And just for information, as of today, we are five, well, actually, we're $3,000 right now in debt, as far as paying the VN drivers. And by the end of the fiscal year, we will be $5,000 in debt paying the VN drivers. That's just to let you know how much we use this service. And it is for so many things. I mean, it's just for so many things. And number one, it's for taking people back and forth to doctors. That's, and that's usually the elderly or disabled or veterans. It's a good service, I'm sure everyone knows about it. It has, it's been fantastic. And we even take them when we can, if there's no medical reasons, we can take the grocery shopping, and that's a huge plus for the elderly.
Okay, so Pam, you have a minute left. Are you looking to make a motion?
One minute, yeah. I make a motion that we increase the VN drivers' salary just a little bit more.
Okay, I need a motion, and I need to know where it's coming from. What's your total amount? So instead of $53,870 for your department total, what are you looking to make the motion as?
I would like to make a motion for another $1,000.
So you're looking to increase your budget to $54,870?
Yes.
And where would those $1,000 be coming from?
That extra $1,000 would be for the VN drivers.
I need to know, in accordance with Article I, if you're increasing a line item, we need to know where the funding is coming from.
Out of the $7 million that we've been talking about all night.
No.
No.
No, that's not how it works. We need a specific line item, line, or funding source.
Free cash?
Okay, so there's a motion to increase the Council on Aging department budget from $53,870 to $54,870, with a $1,000 increase coming from free cash. Can Finance Committee confirm for me that there's $1,000 available in free cash to absorb that increase?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, would anybody like to speak on this motion that's been, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by, I'm sorry, Jason Maylie? Okay, would anybody else like to speak to the motion that's currently on the floor? I heard I would over here first, and then Gary's second.
Ah, I'm first. So, I knew that would cause you.
I know.
So the reason why, so certainly I have a lot of sympathy for the VN drivers being used by seniors in town. However, we are already over budget $136,000. We did increase the budget, we didn't level fund it, even though it was $8,600 last year, we increased it to $10,000. So I know it wasn't the increase you were hoping for, but it was still an increase, even with the deficit that we have. And if you look at the overall increase of the COA, it's 7.26% on the budget, which is double what we normally allow. We're trying to keep all increases at 3%. You can see across the board that, in many cases, we weren't able to hold to that. And then I always compare the senior center to the library, because those are the two social services that we have in town, and the library increases right around 6% too. So I think we need to keep things fair between the social services that we offer, and we also have to be mindful of the fact that we already are $136,000 over. If we add this thousand, this only gets bigger as we move forward. So I would not support adding any more money and keeping the budget as is.
Thank you. Gary?
Yeah, I don't have much to add, except I will point out that we increased the COA budget last year by close to 30%. So as we look at the budget line items from year to year, we're investing in areas selectively over the years. And so it's important to look back at the recent history, where we've invested, where the increases have been, as we try to improve the town overall. And I know it's a small number, and it feels like we're putting a stake in the ground, but we're trying to be consistent in terms of how we manage across the departments, the requests, the guidance that we give to the departments, and our reaction to the numbers that are submitted by the departments.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the audience like to speak?
Robin Gamash, Hocktis Road. I just heard you say that we have a deficit of $167,000 or so?
I'm going to pause right there. Can you repeat the number, Gary?
It's about $136,000.
So where is that? We're voting on a budget, we don't have the money? We've been transferring money into stabilization and capital funds. How can you do that if you have a deficit?
It's a great question. I'll let Gary answer it.
Again, the article explains where the funds are coming from.
Yep.
So our revenue for this year is $136,000 short of the bills that need to be paid.
Oh, it's the revenue, but we have money in free cash that we're using to balance the budget.
That's correct. Free cash, there's ARPA funds, there's a number of sources of funding that are listed here, septic Title V accounts, we have a big surplus there, we took some out of that, so that's how we, that's how we balance things in the end.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to ask a question or speak? Come on up.
I'm sorry, I did want to ask Pam, I think when you got up, you said you were already a deficit of 2,000 or 3,000, and expected to be about 5,000 by the end of the year? So why are you raising it 1,000? Why wouldn't we try to?
So we're not going to speak to the current year's budget, that's not what we're voting on.
So I guess I want to know what, what the $1,000 would cover.
I do, too. Well, I want to know where the deficit is, but that would be a more appropriate question to ask of the Council on Aging, about their FY23 budget, or come to a selectman meeting to find out what's going on with the budget. But the motion's been made for $1,000, she said, to offset some of the increased costs. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. So this will be in order to fund the Council on Aging in the amended motion amount of All those in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion does not pass. So at this time, we're going to go back to the Finance Committee recommended budget. I'd be looking for a motion to fund the Council on Aging in the amount of $53,870 as requested, as suggested by the Finance Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Roland Barrett. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes. Okay, so at this time, just to confirm, we have made our way through the entire budget, and we did not make any changes. Therefore, the total amount of the budget for this year will be $7,309,807. Having said that, we'll move on to Article 11. This is the BMR, other post-employment benefits. And what I understand is, because we just approved the budget, there'll be no action that is needed to be taken on this article, so we'd be looking for a motion to take no action.
So moved.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Andrew. Any discussion on this? Again, it was included in the budget, so because the budget passed, we don't have to call this out separately. Seeing no questions, I'll call for the vote. One moment, please, come on down, Paul.
Just a point of order, I don't believe we voted on the total budget.
Well, we voted on everything not held, and then we voted Well, we voted on everything that held, and then we voted on the three that were held, so we do have the total amount certified.
Okay. I thought that typically, we would go back to the original motion and vote on the total amount, but that's okay.
Is that necessary? Yeah, we've, Council says we've already voted on everything, so we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so back to Article 11, motion to do nothing with this, because it was included in the previous budget. All those in favor of taking no action on Article 11, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 12, BMR School Committee Stipends. I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone-Milville Regional School District Committee be compensated for their services as such members, and to set the annual amount of said compensation at $1,500 per member, and $1,800 for the chairman as printed in the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Aaron Venaco, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Helge. Aaron, do you want to speak to the article, or?
It's an annual article, something that's always been in place, and the money is already appropriated in the school budget. It is not additional funding from the towns, but both towns do approve it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this article? See, oh, come on down.
Richard Stearns, 28th Bowl to Court. I'd be interested to know why it is that no one on the stage is interested in having this pass.
Sure. So I think what you're referring to is the recommendations that are printed in your pack.
Yeah, the recommendations were all against this particular piece.
Sure. I'll let the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen speak.
Yep, so if you look at our budget, we don't have stipends for just about anyone in town. And so in order for it to be fair, I don't think anyone should get a stipend. So that's why the Board of Selectmen voted against it, to keep it fair.
Thank you. Finance Committee, do you have anything to add, or?
It's basically the same. We removed stipends for most positions that are essentially volunteer positions back in 2018, 2019, fiscal 2019. And for various reasons, this was not exempted as part of the process, we weren't voting on it at that time. And so, out of principle is what the votes are.
Thank you. I know Aaron wants to speak again. Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to speak before? Come on down, Aubrey. Is there anybody else who'd like an opportunity to speak?
Just a question on that point for Board of Selectmen and FinCom. BBT stipend was included and approved in the BBT budget, is that correct, based on line 255?
Finance Committee?
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak, and then I'm going to let Aaron speak again? Come on down.
Megan Lafayette, Lyon Court, 25 Lyon Court. So just, I want to make sure I heard that right. So the person that represents BBT would get a stipend, but the people that represent BMR would not get stipends?
So to clarify, in the BBT budget, there is an amount for a stipend for our BBT representative. In our BMR budget, there is also a line item for the school committee members of Milville, and Blackstone. But the difference is, the Blackstone stipends need to be voted on here at town meeting, whereas the BBT one does not. So Aubrey is making the point, I believe, that the BBT stipend was already passed as part of their budget and was not held, whereas this stipend, it was also included in the BMR budget that we've already approved, but it just gets called out separately as a matter of procedure and how this place operates, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jen would like to add on to it, and I'm going to let her.
Yep, so the only thing I would add is, we did, there was a motion at a previous town meeting to take out the BBT stipend, and it didn't pass. So I would prefer that there was no BBT stipend as well, and no BMR school district stipends. I don't think anyone should get a stipend to make it fair. So, but we tried to do it, and it didn't pass, so, you know, you can't fight City Hall, so that's what happened.
Thank you. I'm going to let the lady in the back speak right here.
Karen Zekanowski, Chestnut Hill Road. So if we vote no on the stipends, what happens? Who gets what?
It's a great question, and I'm going to defer it to School Committee. I'll let Aaron speak. Speak to that, and then you can make your other point, too, Aaron.
Since the budget is already passed, the money is appropriated to the school, and therefore, we would reappropriate it to the students.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak, or I'm going to let Aaron speak again? Go ahead.
So just a little bit of history on stipends. Actually, we are elected officials. I guess it's semi-volunteer, we sign up to be elected. FinCom is appointed, which is more volunteer than elected. However, the stipends for the selectmen were voluntarily given back in years prior when the town was in such a deficit, and they have never been put back in. I feel the opposite of what Jen shared, and I feel that everyone should get a stipend. We do a lot of work. This is not by any means supporting my household, but it does make leaving my kids multiple times a month a little bit easier. There are eight of us on the school committee. The money is already appropriated in the budget, both towns have to approve it, and that is actually in place to answer the other question due to our regional agreement. Both towns do have to approve that we would be paid. And I guess that's the difference between BBT. However, I think we all deserve a stipend, including everyone sitting on this stage. It might pay for gas money.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Come on down.
Mary Beth Haynes, 8 Lem Lurleen. I just have a question, if we vote that no, and the town of Blackstone says yes, are we coming back to a super town meeting for one thing? Will they only get half? You know, like, because we're two towns.
So, I'm going to let you answer that question.
So Jane Reggio, 7 Diana Circle. So this first came back to the town of Milville, because Blackstone has had it in its budget and its warrant every year, to my knowledge, through the history of time. And our legal representative said that we needed to do so. If it passed in one town, but did not pass in the other town, it's irrelevant to the budget process, because the money is in the budget process. But what would happen is Blackstone representatives would receive a stipend, and Milville representatives would not. And that's where the fairness came in, in that discussion about, you've got eight people who are working at the same table, is it equity if four are getting it and four are not? But that's a town, that's ultimately a town decision. For some of you who may not know, I was the chairperson of the school committee for six years, so I received a stipend of $1,800. I can tell you that I didn't go to a couple meetings a month, I went to about three or four meetings a week. I can also tell you that every penny of that $1,800 went back into that school district, whether it was attending a sporting event, whether it was going to the empty bowl fundraiser, or a play, or marching band competition, every, or scholarships, or trunk-or-treat, or whatever it is. And people would say, well, you're a community member, you should do those things anyway. And yes, but it made doing a multitude of things that I would put up against anybody else in terms of their commitment to the school committee, other than maybe a PTO member. But we're not only attending meetings in Milville, we're attending them in Blackstone, we're attending them at a school committee, and the commitment of a school committee member is second to none, and I will argue that every day of the week.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. So all those in favor of Article 12, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes. Article 13 is the BMR Capital Stabilization Fund, so we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to authorize the Blackstone-Milville Regional School District Committee, School Committee, to establish a stabilization fund for capital planning relative to the school building project pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 16, G1/2, for the purpose of funding a feasibility study with the amount of $500,000 to be funded by the district's excess and deficiency fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Aaron, is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Jen. Aaron, do you want to speak to the article?
Just a few notes here. We've met with our uni-bank rep, Lynn Welch, several times, one with a joint meeting with the selectmen and FinCom. Basically, in the past 10 years, we have submitted approval to MSBA for a school building project. We were not even in the running the first two times. We have entered the pipeline. There will be several votes coming our way for this. The first one will be this fall for a feasibility study. Our committee is very serious about this, and we're also aware of the financial responsibilities that come with it. And we feel that putting this money aside will relieve the burden, relieve the burden from our towns when asked to vote on this in the fall. Maybe not 100%, but we're hoping at least 50%. And we do have money from our E&amp;D that we want to fund this account with, and we're not asking our towns for any additional funds to do this. Basically, what we're looking for tonight is approval to create the account.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am just going to clarify, so it's create the account and put $500,000 in there, which would be coming from the school's E&amp;D fund. Go ahead. Correct me.
So once the account is created, it will take a 2/3 vote of our committee to deposit that money.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions from anybody here? Go ahead, Jen.
I think a question that I've been asked, and I couldn't answer all the way, Aaron, was if we don't go forward with the feasibility study for the towns, what becomes of this
The creation of the account is very specific, so then we would, I'm actually not sure if we'd need to bring it back to a town meeting to dissolve the account, but it would not be able to be used for anything except for a feasibility study without another act of town meeting.
Thank you.
I thought I understood, and now I'm confused, because I think the motion says to also fund the account, and I think what I just heard from Aaron is that there will be no funding of the account tonight, it will just be the creation of a stabilization fund. If that's the case, it seems as though the town, I mean, based on what I think Aaron just said, it's the school committee's discretion on what to deposit into the account from E&amp;D. And if that's the case, I'm not sure why we're voting on this at all, and whether or not the school has the ability to use E&amp;D toward the feasibility study, regardless of whether or not we have this account. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Aaron?
So we need to essentially put this money aside. Our E&amp;D is certified each year, and we cannot carry a certain percentage higher than the I think it's expected that the actual bill would be paid in about three years' time, but I'm going to ask if the superintendent wants to add something or correct me if I was wrong.
Sure.
I believe the way it reads, it says, "to be funded by the district's E&amp;D," so it's not funded from town.
So I just want to introduce, Dr. DeFalco is the superintendent for BMR. He is not a registered voter here in the town of Milville, but I really think it would be appropriate for him to comment on this, so unless there are any objections, please, Dr. DeFalco.
So the town does have to approve the opening of the fund and the amount that the school committee would vote to move into it? So the way that the article is written is correct?
Thank you. And Council has reviewed it as well, and is in agreement. So, go ahead, sir.
Barrett Langley, 71 Grove Street. So what's confusing me is the term "district's excess and deficiency fund." So that says that they already have a fund, okay? And somehow, that fund, in spite of the fact of inflation and everything else, that we just budgeted for, knowing that we have to overcome this inflation thing, the school district is expecting to have excess? If it's a deficiency, then it can't take money out of a deficiency fund, can they? So where does the money come from, if it's coming from that fund that already exists?
Sure, thank you, so we'll let Aaron speak to that.
Actually, we can thank Dr. DeFalco for that, because any money that is going into our E&amp;D on a yearly basis is because of the grants he has gotten for our district that have covered the budgets that were approved here the prior year. And it is the only reason we've had any money left at the end of a year. Safety grants, Escher funds, federal food, I mean, the list is large, and so is the amount, over $1 million at a time sometimes, that Jason has secured for us.
Thank you. So when you think of it in the town's terms, we have our stabilization accounts, right? At the end of the year, what we don't spend, that we appropriate, whatever's left over, the state certifies the next year as free cash, right? It's money that's available for the town for the next year. Some of that we take, and we put it into a stabilization account, almost like a savings account, a rainy day account. So my understanding is, the school's E&amp;D account is similar to what would be our stabilization account, where the money that they've saved kind of gets put away for rainy days. It'll take a 2/3 vote from the school committee to pull it out of that fund. So there is, do we know a balance in there approximately?
1.2.
$1.2 million at the current time. So they're looking to take the $500,000 out of there and set it aside for what Aaron described as, you know, their feasibility study, where the bill might be due in a few years, but with the funding that's in there now, they'd like to set that aside for the future anticipated need. Did I sum it up good? Okay.
Karen Zekanowski, Chestnut Hill Road. My question's directed to the Board of Selectmen. If the study recommends building a new school, and the school committee agrees, how do you expect the Milville taxpayers to fund this project? We are a town already struggling to support what we have. As you heard tonight, you heard everybody get up here, we're tight budget, and we love our town, we want to keep it running, by the way, you guys doing a great job, but a new school? Are we talking a new school here? So our school enrollments are down by 40%. We're looking at closing one school, and Senator Fatman has warned us that money coming from the state to our schools next year doesn't look good.
Okay, so I'm going to stop you right here. The motion that we're looking to vote on is to establish the stabilization fund, so we can't get too off scope of that. These are very valid questions, and I suggest that you take them to the school committee meeting, or attend a finance committee, or a Board of Selectmen, they all have a public forum, but unfortunately, that's not in the scope of this article that we're voting on right now.
But this article actually goes to that, what they want to do with it.
No, talking about the school enrollment numbers this year isn't where we're going to go, so I'm going to ask you to take your seat.
Well, can I say one more thing, then?
If it's in relation to the article that we're voting on.
Yes, I want to say that if the Board of Selectmen can tell us where the money will come from without an override, then the study should be put on hold by the Milville taxpayers, voting no on Article 13.
Thank you. So just to clarify and answer your question, where the money would come from was clarified in the motion, it would be coming from the school's district's excess and deficiency fund. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, sure.
I think, so my point is, since the town has to come together to approve a feasibility study, which is going to be a large expense, and the stabilization fund relates to that feasibility study, I feel it would be more appropriate to include this article with whatever future town meeting we are going to need to reconvene to approve the feasibility study at a later date.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor of passing Article 13, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion fails. Is there seven people who'd like to stand up and request a recount? Okay, we'll do a recount. All those in favor, please signify by raising their cards and hold them up. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Do you have the total number of checked-in voters?
How many people checked in?
Can I have a total count from the back, please?
61.
Thank you. On account, the eyes have it, the motion passes. You're welcome. Thank you. Article 14, cable appropriations. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate $33,000 from the PEG Access and Cable Fund available fund balance to fund the cable operation for FY 2024, starting July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, under the direction of the cable coordinator. Said funds to be spent on professional wages in the amount of $18,000, part-time wages $5,000, and expenses $10,000. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion made by Jennifer. Is there a second? Seconded by Roland. Jen, would you like to speak to the article?
So, this allows us to film the town meeting, the board of selectmen meetings, and all the things that enable us to have these meetings available online.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes. Article 15, to transfer Title V surplus funds to the general stabilization. At this time, there are no Title V funds to transfer, so we'd be looking for a motion to take no action on this article.
So moved.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Roland. Gary, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, we have some accruals in this Title V account. The town administrator is working on dispersment and proper managing of this account going forward, but at this point in time, we're not ready to make any changes.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 16 is a bylaw adoption of Mass. General Law Chapter 60, Section 62A, municipalities' treasure tax title payment plans. We'd be looking for a motion that the town adopt a bylaw authorizing tax title payment plans in accordance with General Law Chapter 60, Section 62A, as written in the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Matthew. At this time, I would invite the town treasurer to come up and speak to the article. Again, she is not a town resident, but has a lot of relative knowledge on this, so if there are no objections, I'm gonna give her up to the three minutes to speak to the article. Just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Jane Snellman, and I am your treasurer-collector.
Can you just move in a little bit?
Oh, sorry. My name is Jane Snellman, and I am your treasurer-collector. Adoption of this bylaw change, which would make us in line with the Massachusetts Chapter 60, Section 62A, would allow me to make longer-term payment plans with... Sorry. Thank you. It would allow me to make longer-term payment plans with those properties that have gone into tax title. This would not jeopardize the town's interests at all, because the very moving of a property that's in arrears from the regular tax over into the tax title account effectively puts a lien on the property, and the deed cannot be changed before that lien is fulfilled to the town. Also of concern is that the base amount that is moved into the tax title account includes not only the real estate, which was appropriated for the budget, but also the accrued interest to date and all of the costs associated with moving that property into tax title. If we adopt this bylaw, that would allow me to extend the amount of time that someone can make a, make payment arrangements. Typically, the guidance is two years, which, when you add in the factor that most of the payment plans suggest that you insist that the taxpayer stay current with the current and ongoing obligations to the town while trying to pay that backlog of amounts due, there's a, there's a high failure rate. So, the MCTA, the Massachusetts Collectors' Treasurers' Association, has very good data that when you extend it to a five-year plan, you have a lot better success rate. And the goal here is not only to get the monies back for the town, because our budget was based on that, but also to help the people keep the, their interest in their properties. You know, we're not looking to foreclose and get people out of their properties. So, this would give me more flexibility. It also allows for some waiving of up to 50% of the tax title interest as an incentive for people to follow through with the plan and make good on that plan. The interest that it gives the potential to waive is only the interest that is accrued on the tax title base amount. It doesn't include any of the original amounts in arrears that got moved into tax title. The tax title interest rate is a purposefully strict 16%. It is meant to be a punitive measure. It's put in place by the state. The regular real estate is, the interest rate there is the 14% as mandated. So, I would ask that you pass this and allow me some more leeway. That'll make me more free to get the liens secured for the town's interests. Thank you.
Did you practice three minutes? Because you were right on. Thank you.
Only my husband knows that.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the audience for any clarification of the adoption of this bylaw? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 18 is a capital item for our police cruisers. We'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate $75,000 to partially fund the purchase and equipping of two new police cruisers from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund, with the balance of funding required to come from other sources. Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, before I pass it over to Jen, I do just want to make note, because this will be funded from a public safety stabilization account. It will require a two-thirds majority to pass. So, with that, I'll let Jen speak to the article.
Great, thank you. So, we did an analysis on the capital planning committee to see how often we should replace police cruisers, and it came to every other year. So, through analysis, I contacted a bunch of towns, and it was basically like a cruiser is good to about 100,000 miles, and then you can use it for things like details or transport prisoners for maybe another 25,000 miles, and then after that, you want to retire. So, one of these is for our police cruiser for normal daily use. And the second cruiser is a command vehicle for the police chief. His car in March had 137,000 miles on it, and now we're two months past that. So, that's why we're looking to replace it at this time. And we'll be, the balance will be coming from ARPA, so we're lucky that we have those funds that we can use to make this investment in our public safety.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or wish to speak to the article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 19, capital item, fire hydrant replacement and repairs. So, I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate $100,000 to replace and/or repair fire hydrants from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Richard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Claudette. And again, I'm just gonna remind everybody, because the funding for this article is coming from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund, it'll require two-thirds of the voters to pass the article. So, go ahead, Richard. Did you want to speak to the article?
So, this is for, basically, preventive maintenance for aging fire hydrant infrastructure. So, without maintaining this, the town could potentially be in jeopardy in the event we have a house fire, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments in regards to the article? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 20 is a zoning bylaw change. So, we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to amend the Millville zoning bylaws as noted in Sections A, B, and C, as printed in the warrant, and to amend the Town of Millville bylaws as printed in Section D in the warrant. Is there a motion? Motion made by Pam Maloney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andrew Alward. Pam, if you want to come down and speak to the article, and while Pam's walking down, as another housekeeping reminder, I will remind everybody that because this is a zoning bylaw change, it requires two-thirds of the room to vote to pass this article as well. So, Pam, do you want to just introduce yourself?
Sure thing. Pam Maloney. I am the chair of the Town's Planning Board.
They're gonna tell you to take a step in.
Step in.
Thank you.
A few years ago, we had a study that was done with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, where they made some suggestions to us that our planning board should consider to update our zoning bylaws to make them more in line with what the town's actually doing, and also bring it up to date, as some of these articles haven't been changed in quite some time. So, what you're seeing before you is our first take at some of those changes that have been recommended to us, which include some spelling and grammar updates, some additional definitions that were missing from our bylaws, some changes to definitions that were in our bylaws that were very vague, and then, in one case, the Section D, which is a Mass. General Law reference that referred to the wrong law. So, we were updating it to be the corrected law.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments in regards to the article? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 20 zoning bylaw changes, please signify by holding up your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Article 21, amend the Town of Millville bylaws, Chapter 20, personnel. So, we'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to amend the town bylaw, Chapter 20, Section 20-8D, compensation system, by replacing the existing classification and compensation plan effective July 1st, 2022, with the classification and compensation plan effective July 1st, 2023, as printed in the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Matthew. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Jen. Matthew, do you want to speak to the article?
Yeah, so essentially, it kind of just divides...
Is that one turned on?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Let's get a little closer, sorry. So, yeah, essentially, this kind of just lists out the hourly rates, as well, the salaries adjusted. It's also reflected in the budget amounts that are already approved upon, and it takes into account things like inflation and cost of living increases.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 21, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. At this time, that concludes the business. We would just be looking for a motion to dissolve the warrant. So moved. So, a motion to dissolve the warrant made by Jennifer Gill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andrew, was it?
Yes.
Andrew. Okay. Any further discussion on dissolving the warrant? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and have a great night.